Thursday, June 16, 2016. Calling the Hingham Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. Approval of the minutes.
Let me get the dates. One, two.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 21, 2016, as amended.
Twenty-eighth, isn't it?
Twenty-first.
Okay, sorry.
So what?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to defer on the twenty-eighth. I'm illuminating on your suggestions.
Sure.
Okay. Questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda? No, thank you, Mr. Phillips. As I explained to you before, you're under indictment, you're subject to disciplinary matters, you're represented by counsel, this is inappropriate venue.
Mr. Healy, you don't even know what I want to speak on. What do you have to hide from the public? What are you afraid of here tonight?
Mr. Phillips, I'm not going to recognize you, sir. We're in litigation. It's inappropriate for us to speak to you under any circumstances. Please sit down.
Again, you don't know what I'm even going to speak on. Why are you hiding things from the public? What are you afraid of?
Mr. Phillips, I'm going to ask you for the last time. Anybody else? Okay. 7:05, 2016 Shellfish Licenses and Fees. Mr. Harbor Master present.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Would you like me to begin?
If you would.
Sure. Certainly. So, shellfishing has not occurred in Hingham for the last four years. About four years ago, a disease came in, decreased the population, and because of the decrease in population, the shellfishmen have not pursued getting licenses and no harvesting has occurred. In the last couple of weeks, the Division Marine Fisheries, which regulates the population, monitors their health, has determined that, you know, the shellfish are reaching a size that can be harvested, and they would like Hingham to open their shellfish beds, and they've also requested that we prorate the fee. Traditionally, the fee for residents was $225 for an entire year, and non-residents was $350. But they're only looking to dig for about four months, so we'd like to see if we can prorate the fee. And the other request that I had was, and I'll explain a little bit of the confusion, but we've always had to sell the shellfish license by March 1st. But if you look into the regulations that I provided you, you'll notice that you don't actually see it in there. So, there's actually three different regulations that we've been working on in the town of Hingham, and it's a little bit confusing. The Division Marine Fisheries only recognizes the 1990 shellfish regulations, which are very outdated. In 2004, the Board of Selectmen adopted a new set of regulations. Preparing for this meeting, we looked through the Selectmen's file to find the signed copy. The signed copy doesn't have that March 1st deadline in it. I went back to my office and looked through the regulations. The one that the town has been using since 2004 has the March 1st deadline in it. So, there's three regulations, a little bit of confusion, but ultimately, I guess what I'm looking for is permission for the town clerk to, you know, issue licenses for these three days at this type of a fee. It could be less if you'd like, so that the shellfishmen can get out there, harvest some shellfish, and we can see how all of our beds are doing. Turning them over can help the shellfish when they turn the mudflats over, and seeing what kind of quantities can actually come out of the shellfish bed.
How many licenses would you anticipate issuing, should this?
Not really sure. I would anticipate probably less than ten if we had, you know, just opened it up and allowed license to be sold all summer, and we had lots of shellfish. What could happen is you could get an influx of people coming from all over the state. That's why that March 1st deadline, I believe, was intended to be in the regulations that were signed in 2004.
I take it this would be a one-time deal?
Yeah, so this would be for this year. What I'd like to do is report back to you before, you know, January 1st. These regulations, again, were signed in 2004. A lot has changed in the shellfish community, and I believe we need to revise our regulations. We attempted to do it with the Division Marine Fisheries about six years ago, but it was never finalized. So I'd like to work with our neighboring communities that we work with and revise our regulations and clear up some of this confusion before next season if harvesting continues.
Questions from my colleagues?
Sure. Eric, you want to ask?
Thank you. So, can the harvesting period is a shorter period than it's been in the past, or is it the same period that it's been in the past?
In the past, what they used to do is they would harvest in Hingham for a year, then they would go to Hall and Weymouth, so we'd have two years off. When the population started to decrease, they started to dig, you know, a couple of months in Hingham, a couple of months in Hall, a couple of months in Weymouth throughout that year. Prior to me becoming Harbor Master, we did something very similar with a prorated fee. However, they had to be purchased by the March 1st deadline, which is that confusion. So I guess I'm just looking for the board to, you know, support this type of fee, or you could charge less if you choose.
Sure, and I'm sorry, I don't think I... So, the window for harvesting, is it the same window as the duration? The same as it's been in the past, or is it shorter or longer?
The window for harvesting hasn't changed.
Okay.
I think we're not going to see the shellfishmen harvesting in the winter months.
Yep.
Primarily because the diggers that are out there don't really want to be out there in the winter months.
And are there a set number of licenses that are issued, or is it an infinite number?
There is no set number. It could, I guess, be infinite, and that's one reason we have, you know, that time period. Shellfishmen choose to dig in different harbors throughout the Commonwealth. We have a lot of people up on the North Shore, so the deadline originally was intended to be in there, I believe, so that if all of a sudden you get into July and you realize Hingham has a plethora of shellfish, all of a sudden, they don't come from the entire state to Hingham and clean out the population.
Thank you. And one final question. If this is adopted, how is this going to be advertised to people who might be interested?
So I'll reach out to the Division Marine Fisheries, who supports this, and I'll also reach out to the master diggers. So there's a couple of master diggers that would come here, and then they regulate their subordinate diggers. So Division Marine Fisheries, as well as the master diggers that would dig here, will make sure that the subordinates are aware of when it's going to be, and then we'll issue the license.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
So, just so I understood, I know they said there were a number of different regulations. Are they contradicting each other at this stage, or?
Not really. They're really not contradicting. There's just a difference in, I believe, like, the price of the permit and when they can be sold, but they don't really conflict very much. We haven't had really any issues.
And I'm not overly concerned of the date, but I just make sure I understand it. So the new regulations in '04, the newer regulations that the town enacted, do they do not have a March 1st date, or they do?
So the ones for, that were the signed copy from 2004, that we found in the Selectmen's office, doesn't have that March 1st, but the regulations that my office has been operating on since before I was Harbor Master has that March 1st deadline. And we looked back in the minutes to try to see what might have been intended. Not really sure how this happened. Trying to look back again, I wasn't the Harbor Master, then I was an assistant, but it was kind of ingrained in my mind, this March 1st deadline. I believe that was the intention, but it wasn't in those regulations. That's why it was in my request.
So in the years past, you know, five, six, seven years ago, how many folks were actually getting permits? Do we have an idea in the ballpark?
Probably about 10, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less, but not very many.
And there'd be, what, some type of notice to the public, and then a three-day period for them to obtain licenses?
So it's only, so we're conditionally restricted, so it's only for commercial harvesting. So if we notify the master diggers, they'll reach out to their subordinate diggers, and we'll work with the Division Marine Fisheries to make sure people are aware of it.
And where or when do we come up with a figure? Would it be 10, or some other number?
The number of licenses. I didn't actually request a number of licenses. I don't see us selling so many that we should be concerned. I think it's important to harvest as many of the shellfish as we can right now, because what the track record has shown, they'll get to a certain size, and they're just going to die anyways, and that's why the division would like to harvest as many as they can, because they're going to die anyways, most likely. What's causing them to die has been studied by the Division Marine Fisheries, as well as, or health, and it's, there's no harm to humans, it's just something that causes them to die at a certain point in time.
And just, and Division Marine Fisheries will actually pick the locations in the town where the landings can take place?
So that's done with the Division Marine Fisheries, as well as myself will pick where they're going to land, where they're going to dig, the days that they're going to dig, and then everything goes up to Newbury Port for treatment. They're put into, like, an oatmeal bath for a couple of days before they go to market to clean out the shellfish.
Right, but there'll be certain locations, some places, like the beach is off grounds, could I say?
Correct. They won't be digging in the bathing beach during the middle of the summer.
Okay. That's good.
Questions from the audience? I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to support the reviving shellfish harvesting in Hingham Waterways consistent with our shellfish management plan adopted on July 27, 2004, with the following two exceptions. One, allow the town clerk to issue licenses during a three-day period to be set by the Harbor Master and town clerk, and two, prorate the annual fee of $225 for residents and $350 for non-residents, to $75 for residents and $117 for non-residents for harvesting, which will occur from June through October 31, 2016.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome. Okay.
Mr. Davis, while he's here?
Oh. Yeah, Ken, while we're here, we have some appointments with respect to your assistant Harbor Masters. Any comments or thoughts there you want to add before we do that?
Again, these are the assistants that have worked with us for the last couple of years. Some of them were new last year. They've all done an excellent job. Just about every one of them has been through the police academy. They're all hard workers, and I support them being appointed.
Okay, good. And have a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to reappoint the following assistant Harbor Masters for the upcoming year. Joe Driscoll, Michael McHugh, Michael Riley, Danny Souza, Jake Henry, and Carter Kennedy, Raymond Avreu, Michael Nash, Daniel Goldstein, and Max Goldstein.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Is Mr. Thomas here?
I'm here.
There he is.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for not giving up.
I'd be here with me, but...
I left a little extra pass out with...
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Thomas. Started wrote Hingham. I'd like to just give you a brief history of how we got to this point, and what, a little more history on the iron horse. Actually, it's a bronze horse, but everybody calls it the iron horse. When I was on the Harbor Development Committee five years ago, I took interest in those guns, and we discussed it, discussed it, discussed it, and it went nowhere. After I left the committee, I went down and got the information off the guns directly, took it to Keith Jermaine, and through his abilities, found out that they were manufactured at the Waterville Arsenal in New York, Albany, New York, in 1941. With that, I went forward with trying to find out how they got here, how they were put to harbor, just most recently yesterday, on a phone call with somebody at the Army level. I think I've got an answer to that, but it's still iffy. I wrote the museum at the Waterville Arsenal with no response. I then called and ended up talking to a museum director, and he said unfortunately, the year prior to that, the museum was closed, and all the weapons they had were dispersed throughout the country, so the Albany, New York process doesn't exist anymore. I then talked to the Army National Defense Surplus in Washington, DC. I was referred to the Mass State Agency for Surplus Disposal of Army Equipment. Conversation with the manager in Boston said chances are very limited. Don't hold your breath. So with that, Paul Healy, Mr. Healy, wrote a letter to Quantico Virginia Marines, and a letter to the Army Historical Division with likewise results, nothing. Finally, through Scott, who's not here yet, being commander of the legion, I'm in the legion, we started talking about this, and he told me about how he acquires the weapons for the corner guards and things like that, and we decided to try that avenue, and lo and behold, found through this legion what's called TacCom, the Army Tank and Artillery Corps in Warren, Michigan. And had a very nice talk with a lady out there back in December, and she sent me the forms, and I believe you have those before you. And since that time, there's been some changes at that level also. This woman you see on there, Janice Grineary, no longer works there. Yesterday, my call was with Audrey Clark, who is now the woman in charge of donation specialist for the Army Donation Program. And she's informed me that some of the things that Janice led me to believe back in December, such as getting a list of available weapons once we complete these forms, that isn't the way it goes. Now the forms go back to them, and we get on a waiting list on a first-in, first-out basis as weapons become available. So that shades it a little bit in making weapons less available, if you will. I'd like to just give you a brief history and tell you that this has been discussed at length with Scott, the American Legion, Keith, the B.A. agent, who's away on duty this week, Andrea of the Historical, Alexander McMillian, I talked to him yesterday, he has a New Hampshire home. He's very much in favor of this. Bill Riordan of the Harbor Development, Alan Pearl to the Beach Trustees, Randy Sylvester and Ken Corson, and we've all discussed these things at length. I also addressed the Legion last winter, and all the veterans are in agreement. So there is a consensus all the way down the line. What I'd like to do tonight is get a commitment from you. This is one of the formalities of the form, as you can see, a public hearing has to be held. A mayor or, in this case, selectman have to approve the form, agree to amount of dollars. There's no money upfront, but we do have to agree to some spending. If something becomes available, then if we're willing to bring it back here and pay for it, if it comes from New York or comes from California, obviously, the cost is going to be what it's going to be. The iron horse park, as we refer to it, and these guns, with everything that's going on at the harbor right now, the beach work, the harbor work, and the beautification that's happening, and the money that's finally being sent, these are the worst I saw at the harbor. They really have to go, and everybody's in agreement. We could really have a beautiful waterfront park someday if we can get all of these things together. The plaque was dedicated to all those that served in a conflict from the Revolutionary War up to 1929. The guns weren't made until 1941. In 1928, a memorial committee was formed to create this mark, and bids were sent out for design, and the victory horse was chosen. The committee was chaired by Walter Bube, and I'll read you his comment in a minute. And a dedication was held a year later on June 30, 1929, given by Captain Keela Bube, who also spoke at the dignitaries. Among the dignitaries, by the way, at this June 1929 meeting, was Civil War veterans and Herbert Foss, wearing his Medal of Honor. The cost was $23,000 for the statue, $117 for the plaque, and $3,993 to build the mound that it sits on today. Total cost to the town was $27,110. Chairman Walter Bube's comment at his address was, "The town of Hingham, we delivered this beautiful emblematic figure. It is framed by the exquisite scenes and beauty of the picturesque land sea park, destined to be a gem in the bosom of Hingham Harbor." That was 87 years ago, so hopefully, we can continue that and do these forms. Back to the Audrey Clark that I spoke with yesterday. She said that the best thing to do is complete the forms, pick a dollar amount. She suggested that we don't limit ourselves on the dollar amount, just so that every chance that something can be sent, it can be sent. As you noticed, there's $10,000 benchmarks, and over $10,000. Preferably to pick the higher amount, and that way, we have a better chance of seeing something being offered to us when it becomes available. A lot of times, it's obsolete equipment that has come back from another community. A lot of times, it's something that the Army decides to give up. The most available item right now are M1 tanks in Alabama, and they only cost about $100,000 to get here, but there's not many towns that take them. She threw that out as an afterthought. So...
It's a plea?
That's it. Ken Corson is going to give me the coordinates, the map coordinates of the harbor, and I have taken pictures so that we have what's needed to send with this form, once it's completed, by whoever, and signed by, I would assume, Paul or town administrator. If we send these forms back to TacCom in Warren, Michigan, we are then on a first-in, first-out basis for the next piece of equipment that comes along, or any equipment that comes along, they will notify us, and at that time is when we have to make a decision, and a decision on dollars and cents. So, that's it.
Questions?
Sure. So, John, in terms of the process here, if this form is filled out, if we vote to approve it, do we have to come up with a dollar figure? Is it?
No. It's asking you to pick...
I thought you mentioned $10,000.
Well, up to, here it is. Identify the maximum dollar amount that you were prepared to pay, not to exceed $1,000, not to exceed $10,000, or exceeds $10,001. At her recommendation, and my feeling is, I think we should say exceeds $10,000, and not limit the field of what might become our way. I would not only look at this as what, how it would be funded, could be CPC money, put an article on a town meeting. Somebody made a suggestion that possibly there's the railroad mitigation fund might have, but we can, right now, financing is not the question. Right now, it's a matter of getting ourselves into the docket so that we're in line for whatever might happen.
Are we looking to replace equipment down there?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
That's why I wish Scott was here. He's still not here, is he? Scott would be very willing to take those two 37-millimeter guns and take them out to the Green Building at the park, where we have a military display, if you've ever been there, and maybe do a little work on them. I don't know how much can be done, the condition they're in, but, oh, and by the way, I brought this up with that woman. I said, she said, "Do you have some?" And I told her what we had. She said, "Well, most likely, that was part of the, what happened back after the close of the Second World War, that a lot of equipment was just given out." If towns throughout America asked for something, the Army was so loaded with equipment after the war, they just passed it out, and that's where we think those two guns came from. And they're not registered. They don't have to be filed. The picture I gave you in front of the Legion Hall, this has to be registered every year. Scott and his people have to notify the Army that it's still there and in a good shape and hasn't been lost. That's how the Army keeps track of these. That was refurbished by the 1058 squadron about five years ago. But as you can see, the harbor guns have gone, any kind of refurbishment.
But, John, is the cost that we would bear transportation alone, or is there some other cost involved?
Well, as you see in the form, there's some decommissioning cost possible, depending on where it comes from. That's, yes, I mean, the cost of getting it here, that would probably be the biggest cost, than taking out what's there, building an appropriate cement platform, assuming, maybe let's say, we get a howitzer, I don't know. You know, we can put one good gun down there instead of two.
Do we have a choice as to what we get, or literally?
You do. Well, they'll notify you what's available, when it becomes available, and then we can say...
Depending on the category you check off.
Well, the category, that's the other one, is towed artillery. I don't think we want a helicopter. We don't want tracked vehicle. So it comes down to basically artillery. Those are the choices.
Thank you.
Just before I ask a question, I thank you for all the work you do, you've done at the harbor over the years. I thank you for your persistence with this, and also for going to all the different people before you come before here.
Right.
So I have a couple of questions, not in the interest of further complicating this, but just in terms of the financial piece, to make sure I understand. There's a phrase in the cover letter that says, "It's an agreement to accept responsibility." So does signing this document get us in line if we so choose, or does it commit us in any way to accepting something?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
The only commitment is the same commitment that now exists at the Legion Hall for that gun. Once, if we would be so fortunate to get something like that, we would then, every year, have to fill a form out for the Army.
Yep.
And basically, this equipment is on loan.
Okay.
That's the way to look at it. The Army is loaning, this is loaned to us.
Thank you. And if something becomes available, that would then be, the decision point for us at that point would be, where do we find the funds?
Exactly.
And I'm just, I'm wondering, and I don't know Betty or Tom, if you can offer anything on this, but, you know, hypothetically, if something that's desirable to the town comes up in October, town meeting is still a ways off, we may have missed the window for greenbush funding, I'm just trying to think of a creative way to handle that so that, I'm trying to think of a creative way to handle that. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, Tom, eh?
No, I would say that we would probably have to talk to the people at TacCom and determine whether or not, or what length of time they're offer of their piece of equipment.
I believe they give you a window of time of a month or more to answer if they offer you something, and if they say it's next door in Connecticut, it's, you know, $2,000 or $3,000, it's going to be, jump on the bandwagon. If it's in California, in $10,000, then we got to talk about it.
So then there's a little bit of mechanics there, right?
Sure.
So you would say, okay, great, yes, that is something we want.
Yeah.
We do our due diligence during that month period. We go to whatever committee that we hope would fund it.
Exactly.
They'd agree to fund it, and then we would commit to doing it, though the funds wouldn't then be available until July.
You're really not committed until you accept what's offered.
And I realize that we're encouraged to check all the boxes so that we have
Yes.
the maximum options.
Yes.
Do we have any sort of a sense of the current equipment
It's limited.
that we'd be replacing?
That's why I...
Is it over the $10,000, or do we know?
I don't know. I can't tell you. She was, I asked her that. I said, "What is the norm?" She said, "There is no norm." She said, "It's limited. It's more limited every year because more towns and communities have asked for things. The equipment is not as available as it used to be many years ago." And that's when she offered an M1 tank. She said, "I got plenty of tanks."
And a tank.
There's a reason for that, right?
Thank you. I, with that uncertainty, I think I would be comfortable taking the steps to position us to receive this. I would just kind of say, as with all things, that until we have a firmer sense of the price
Right.
I think that I would want to sort of... I think that I would want to sort of just say, you know, I love the idea, I think we should get ourselves in the queue, but, you know, subject to the cost of what's taking place, and perhaps one thing that we can do, if the board votes favorably on this this evening, is to maybe start some of those conversations, so that if something comes up outside of the window of town meeting, and we have a month to deal with it, maybe we've already started talking about that a little bit.
Sure.
Because I do think that there are different funding sources that would be appropriate for this, and perhaps we could, you know, get the ball rolling on that.
I think your chairman is correct in saying you're positioning ourselves to get in the queue, and without any financial obligation at this point. And then, once they have these forms, we're on line, and whatever happens, happens. And by the way, they're also, in the end, you'll see, there's a three-year renewal. If nothing happens within three years, we have to do it again to refile. If you want to stay in the queue, they require you to refile in three years. But other than that, it's just a matter right now of paperwork, and find out what's around the country.
Thank you very much.
All right. My pleasure.
John, I'll just say, you know, I think Mary said it to us, your relentless effort on behalf of this worthwhile cause is admirable.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, you know, because I know it takes a lot of personal time and effort and...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is it, I'm sorry, where are you sending the letter to? Like, who's this person?
It's called TacCom, T-A-C-O-M, Tank and Artillery Command in Warren, Michigan. It's a central clearinghouse for the U.S. Army.
Okay, thank you.
Why not?
I didn't see a vote.
No. Is there a consensus that we should go forward with this?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion that we authorize the appropriate signatory to apply for and get in the queue with respect to the parameters suggested by Mr. Thomas to TacCom.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Moving on. Discussion of the Community Preservation Committee's composition. Is that you? Excuse me.
So, just as Bob is getting seated, you may recall that we formed a CPA task force that resulted in a Warren article to give the Board of Selectmen the flexibility, if it so chooses, to appoint the seat currently, that has up until now been occupied by a member of the Board of Selectmen. This was actually initiated by Mr. Curley on behalf of the CPC, I think it was last summer. A CPA task force was put together, they did their due diligence, their recommendation that town meeting approved was to enact that. So, the purpose of tonight's discussion, since we are in the talent bank phases, is for the board to decide whether or not we wish for one of us to hold that CPC seat for the upcoming year, or whether we want to take advantage of the flexibility that was granted through town meeting, and appoint somebody to fill that seat. And the CPC met last night, and the note in our folders, and Bob, thank you for preparing it, contains the CPC recommendation.
Well, thank you, and you've, I think, more than adequately described the history of what brings us here tonight. From the viewpoint of the work of the CPC, I think over the last six years when I've been involved, every year, we seem to get more projects and more complex projects, and we try to devote as much time to vetting them as we possibly can. There's a lot of work involved, and having people that are in a position to do that work, I think, is very, very beneficial to the committee, which is one of the reasons why we initially brought up the idea of giving this board the flexibility to either appoint a selectman to the CPC, or to appoint a talented citizen. We thought this was important from the viewpoint of leadership potential on the CPC, because there are five dedicated constituencies that are represented on the CPC that all come with a portfolio, namely historical, housing, conservation, recreation, and I'm forgetting And there are four, or depending on how the appointments are made, right now, there's either one selectman appointment, and one selectman, and two moderators appointments. And those are kind of the representatives without portfolio, and the people that are probably in the best position to serve as the chair and vice chair of the CPC. So, expanding that pool of neutral members, people without portfolio, I think enhances the leadership capabilities. We all recognize that the selectmen have a lot of demands on their time, and it is often difficult for selectmen to attend all of the CPC meetings. Selectmen have never been given roles as project managers on the CPC, because they have the demands in so many other directions. So, to have a citizen appointment that could serve as a project manager would, again, enhance addressing the workload of the CPC. The selectmen, of course, have oversight and have a hearing every year, address questions to the CPC on projects, and vote on our recommendations in terms of what their position is for the recommendations before town meeting. So that, and I think it was properly observed, maybe at last summer's meeting, that perhaps that oversight function could even be exercised more beneficially by the selectmen, because there wouldn't have been one member of the board who was part of the CPC team that had met throughout the year and was in the position of already being a team player and rooter for the CPC recommendations. So, we've discussed all these things, we discussed them again at our meeting last night, and the CPC voted unanimously to recommend that this board follow the option of appointing a citizen, presumably somebody with substantial town experience, and with potential leadership capabilities for serving as an ultimate chair of the CPC. So, I think I've hit the high points, I know there are others here from the committee that addressed the bylaw this year. Happy to answer any questions.
It's really not a question, and I'm going to repeat myself, but it was a pleasure working with you on that committee, and I think having, being part of that process gave me a keen insight, in addition to all the other functions we have as selectmen, to see what are the most rewarding committees I've ever been involved in, in terms of the good things that we can do around town, and I think Lamb is probably one that I'll remember for a long time, for obvious reasons. But, you know, I know that in the beginning of the process, you had a proposal, there were some other proposals out there, and I think we've got to a point where it makes sense, and I know it's unanimous for the CPC group, to at least give the option to, you know, appoint a citizen, and that's always a good thing. And we won't be very far away in terms of, you know, oversight or assistance, whatever you need from us, because we really do appreciate what the committee, the work of the committee and what you do in particular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make further?
I support the CPC's recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the recommendation advanced by the CPC with respect to staffing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Bob, just before you leave the table, this is your last time as the chair of the CPC, and I believe as a member of the Historical Commission, coming before this board, and I think all of us, and everybody in the audience, is just so grateful for all the hard work and all the many contributions that you've given this town, and I think you've left a really indelible imprint, and we are just so grateful for everything that you've done, and so, thank you very much.
Well, it's a privilege, thank you. I'd encourage anyone to volunteer. It's been a wonderfully rewarding experience with a great team of members over the years, and always wonderful working with the selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Scott.
Carol Piles was elected the new chair last night, so I am actually no longer the chair, but Carol was at a graduation this evening, so here I am.
Full of both to working with her.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, we've got a couple of votes. Well, maybe we'll, yeah, let's do the votes first. One I can't be involved in, because I've accused myself due to my daughter's association with Hingham Maritime, so I'll step aside, so the two of you can chat about that.
Okay.
Sure, I'm open, I think. I was going to recommend, and I know, obviously, this is the first time it was discussed, but I've had the benefit of sitting down with Tom and talking to Susan Murphy and Betty, so I think I was pretty happy with some of the discussions I had, but I think this is something we have to keep a close handle on, so I was going to suggest a 30-day extension, and let's keep the progress going.
Does someone have a calendar? So, let's maybe look so that it's a Friday?
Sure.
And so that, I know we sometimes don't meet every week during the summer, so I don't, I don't want that to be a hiccup for us.
Right.
So, the 15th is a Friday, the 14th is a Thursday.
So, July 15th?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the date for finalizing the Barnesworth lease until Friday, July 15th, 2016.
I'll second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a one-day wine and malt beverage license to Pam Gilfman, on behalf of the Trust for Public Land.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next madam on the, uh, next madam, next item on the agenda is discussion of the chairmanship. Last Sunday in the Globe, there was a little blurb about the position of chairman, and there was some discussion or thought that this should be revisited, so I put it on the agenda tonight, and I'm opening this up for discussion, and here we are. So, you know, I took the vote I took six weeks ago. The vote that I took was made in the best interests of the town. It's not a popularity contest, it's not a vote on public policy, it's a vote that anybody who's sat on a board in this town knows is, it's the board's vote. My sole interest is serving the town as efficiently as I possibly can, so that the work that's vital to be done by the board that I sit on is done in an efficient and productive manner. I'm not interested in self-aggrandizement, ego. I've got 35 years of service to this town, ladies and gentlemen. This is not easy stuff, where all full-time workers, we all have jobs outside of this position. In between this and our work, we're very busy people. That's why we have Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator. I gave a reason, and, you know, I thought about the decision I made. I'm not here to slam anybody, but I think the decision I made was well-grounded, and I'm comfortable with it, even though it's unpopular with some people, perhaps some people in this room. But the decisions I make, and continue to make, and will make, as long as I sit, or as long as I serve this town, will be in the best interests of the town. So, beyond that, I don't have a lot more to say, but...
May I say something?
Sure.
I actually have given this a lot of thought, and I wanted to write something, because it was important to me, not just what I said, but how it was said, so I'd like to read that, if I may. Of all the decisions I make on this board, I personally find personnel decisions the most challenging. I'm sensitive to publicly discussing the performance of citizens who generously offer their time and talent to the town, and that's why I've written some remarks. With that as a backdrop, I'd like to offer a few thoughts about my vote for Paul Healy as Chair of the Board of Selectmen for the coming year. Knowing that the reorganization of the board was on our agenda, I came into our May 5th meeting, having spent considerable time thinking about three things. One, the issues facing the town in the near term. Two, the demands and obligations of the chair role. And three, the leadership qualities of my colleagues. As with every decision I make, my main consideration is always what I think is the right thing for the town. After considering the facts, I decided that the town's interests would be best served by having Mr. Healy remain as chair. There were reasons I supported Mr. Healy, and there were reasons I did not support Mr. Gannon. Now, the open meeting law requires that we not publicly, directly, or indirectly conduct business with one another unless we're in a properly posted meeting. Having made up my mind, it would have been my preference to telephone my colleague, to meet individually, and to have this conversation privately. The open meeting law is what it is, and I understood I had to comply with that. As I said that night, I think continuity in board leadership will serve us well, and Mr. Healy's inexperience and knowledge, particularly in the area of development issues, I believe makes him best equipped to lead our board at this particular time. I understand that some citizens do not believe there was an adequate explanation as to why Mr. Gannon wasn't elected chair, and I understand that others disagree with that decision. I'd like to please further explain the rationale for my vote. In my opinion, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen is the most important volunteer position in Hingham. For that reason, seniority, and the recent practice of rotating the chair is only one consideration for me. While the three of us work cooperatively on the business of the town, it's the chair that sets the agenda, the pace, and the tone for the Board of Selectmen, and that in turn affects the pace, the tone, and the morale of staff and volunteer boards and committees who work with and on behalf of the board in conducting the business of the town. Please allow me to give an example. During my tenure on the advisory committee, we worked cooperatively with the Board of Selectmen to review every single warrant article, and every dollar in every budget, before presentation of the entire warrant to town meeting. As you can imagine, and many in this room have experienced, that is a really complex process. It involves the time and the talent of dozens and dozens of staff and volunteers, and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen plays a very integral role in that process. I've experienced Board of Selectmen chairs who are really good at leading this process. They invested time to understand issues and everybody's point of view. They kept things moving, they respected the roles and contributions of committees, and they worked in accordance with an established timeline to make sure that our collective responsibility to town meeting was met. I also experienced Board of Selectmen chairs for whom this aspect of the role was a challenge, and I can speak firsthand to the frustration and the feelings of disrespect that volunteers and staff feel when the Board of Selectmen doesn't conduct its business in a timely and efficient manner, when the board struggles to set agendas, and when the board doesn't adhere to a productive timeline in its decision-making. We all understand that things can fall through the cracks... We all understand that things can fall through the cracks and that the unexpected happens, but I don't think that's how business should be conducted on a regular basis. I don't think people want to work or volunteer in that kind of an environment. I consider one of my main responsibilities to be ensuring that Hingham is a great place to work and a great place to volunteer. So to me, the question of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen includes more than who's next in the rotation. As I considered the question of Chair, several criteria came to mind, and these are in no particular order. The Chair needs to advance initiatives that support achievement of the Board's goals. The Chair needs to fulfill Board and Liaison responsibilities in accordance with our Selectmen policies and procedures and our Code of Conduct. The Chair needs to be accessible to volunteers and town staff. The Chair needs to attend all the Selectmen meetings, performing the necessary preparation and due diligence on agenda items. The Chair needs to actively engage in discussion and ensure timely and decisive votes on matters that come before the Board. I had a choice to make on May 5th. On each of these criteria, I felt that Paul Healy was the best choice for the town and cast my vote accordingly. Now, there is one thing that my vote was not based on. The last time we discussed this issue, Mr. Gannon suggested that he wasn't elected Chair because of specific positions he's taken on business coming before the Board. I want to be really clear on this. Disagreements on particular issues in no way influenced my vote for the Chair. I've disagreed with colleagues on particular issues a lot over the years. The first time I met Paul Healy, we disagreed on a change to the Hatfield Amendment. Ed Siegfried and I disagreed on the new middle school. Bruce Rabuffo and I have disagreed on a lot of school budget issues. Tom Carey and I disagreed on the timing and the scope of the Town Administrator Special Act. Liza O'Reilly and I disagreed on the timing of two major capital projects for the school this year. I have collaborative working relationships with each of these individuals. I think we have a mutual understanding that there are times when we agree, and there are times that we won't agree, and we don't let that get in the way of us working together. And I hope, and I wish, I hope that that's the case for our Board. So I hope this explanation helps inform people about the rationale for my decision. I've tried really hard to handle this matter in a way that's respectful and that doesn't draw any negative attention to the town, to the Board of Selectmen, or to any individuals. To the extent that the grounds for my decision remain unclear, I am prepared to provide further examples that informed my vote, but I really don't want to, and I really hope that's not necessary. Thank you for listening.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, just, I don't want to get into a lot of discussion. I will say this, that in the paper, in discussions, Judy Kelly, very well-respected citizen of this town, expressed a clear intent to come here on the 23rd to present a petition, not necessarily at my request, but I did appreciate, and I do appreciate, the support that I've received from people around this town who think there's more to this than just a good decision. Again, I've never served a day as Chair, so I'm not sure, my track record in terms of being Chair, I don't know how someone could judge me that way, but I don't want to get into it. I reserve my time to speak when Judy Kelly comes. I think it's unfortunate that instead of letting the discussion take place on June 23rd when Judy could be here, because she sent a letter and said she couldn't be here, and I think she may have left a letter here for someone to communicate. But, you know, if we're going to be, if we're looking at a Chairman who's open and inclusive and fair, I mean, that's a pretty good test. Why reschedule or schedule a Selectmen's meeting on this issue when a person has already expressed interest in speaking about it, and many other people express interest in to speak about it? So to me, you know, we're looking at a legacy of chairmanships, as Mary was saying about what people do and don't do. The legacy should be open, inclusive, and fair, not dictatorial, where you tell people when you can speak and who can speak. And if you don't like what they say, you either give them a dirty look, or you make comments to them that are interpreted as being very rude. And that's the scenario, that it could happen. And so to say that one of us is not capable of being a Chair is really silly. We're elected by our constituents. There's a tradition in town, it's a tradition, you can call it what you want. And, you know, I already said it's okay with me, I'm so honored to be an elected official and represent the town. If Paul Healy thinks he wants this job for two years, whether it's spiteful to me or not, I know that prior to a meeting on May 5th, Paul Healy, sitting in that Chair, said he was keeping the Chair warm. Of course, I thought he was talking to me, because we were the only people in the room. And, you know, I don't know what happened along the way, but I know I'm not running for Senate, and you can stand by that reason, but I don't get it. But I look forward to June 23rd, when people from the town of Hingham that have expressed interest in coming forward at the beginning of the meeting, I assume, will be able to have their opportunity to be heard. And I have no ill will towards my colleagues, I respect them highly. In fact, Paul and I are both members of the Bar, and I feel like I have a very good relationship with Paul, you know, and so I'm kind of dumbfounded to understand why he would not, after making that comment to me, why he would not follow through on that. But again, I'm very happy to do my job. If other people have something to say, but out of respect for Judy Kelly, she will be here next week, I would certainly be happy to speak at that time.
I would just add before, I don't know if you're going to open it up to the public. When I opened up my Boston Globe on Sunday and saw that there was a notice there about something coming before the Board, I received a copy of Ms. Kelly's petition, and certainly it is Ms. Kelly's right, or any citizen's right, to advance anything before this Board. We saw an example of Mr. Thomas doing that tonight. In the petition that I saw, it stated that the Board of Selectmen didn't give an adequate explanation for Mr. Gannon's, for Mr. Gannon not being appointed as Chair. I understand, and I understand and accept that a petition may be coming in next week. I offer my comments tonight in the spirit of informing people who may be presented with that, the opportunity to have as many facts as they can, so that they can choose whether or not to sign it. I would also say that on this Board, we typically have a practice where we have, whether it's citizens or other committees, who come in and ask for time on an agenda. It's a little unusual to open your Sunday Boston Globe and find out that something is on your agenda. June 23rd is the last meeting of the fiscal year. We will be making hundreds of thousands of dollars of reserve fund transfers and making appointments to town committees. It would have been helpful to have had a phone call or a request, so that something could be put on the agenda. Again, I understand that that is every citizen's right, but I did want the opportunity tonight to provide some explanation and provide some information that I hope will inform people over the next week.
Just one follow-up on that. I can tell you, because I spoke to Judy, and I said, you know, you don't have to do this, and I'm very comfortable with being a member of the Board of Selectmen, she wanted to do it on her own. At no time did she ever say that she was imposing her will on the Board to put something on the agenda. What she said was, and my understanding was, she was going to come before the Board in the segment in the beginning when folks from town could say, and present the petition and have a few words. I honestly don't think she thought she had a chance of getting on the agenda. And if you can see from what happened, even though we know she's coming, and I did ask the Office if we could, out of courtesy to Ms. Kelly, because she could not be here, if we could put it on the agenda. I could stay here as late as we need to on the 23rd, we just missed two weeks of meetings, so it's not as if we're overworking ourselves. I would be here as late as I need to be for anybody, for any issue, because it's important, we never want to make it appear that we're not allowing people to speak. So she never wanted to put it on the agenda, I think mostly because she never thought she would be allowed to put it on the agenda. She just wanted to come and present her petition, which everybody has a right to do.
But remember too, Paul, that if you want to comment on it next week, you know, there's a difference between the five-minute questions from the public on matters not on the agenda, and all of us who volunteer on committees know that we have to be careful that a discussion, that something in that five minutes doesn't turn into a policy discussion that puts us all out of compliance with the open meeting law. So in a sense, what we, you know, we have to be careful of that. And I'm sorry if Ms. Kelly or anyone else felt like that that was not something that the Board would be interested in doing. I think every citizen has the right to bring business before this town, and so if...
Mary, I did ask if we could put it on next week, and I was told no.
Is there anyone that'd like to say something? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Judy Kelly tonight, who could not come. I think she sent an email to the whole Board on the 15th stating she couldn't come for family reasons. Her petition again is a citizen's petition, which I'm sure you've all read. She did not think she could get this on the agenda, and she wanted to do it in the first 15 minutes of the open meeting law. Judy is not a lawyer, she is a citizen, so this question of open meeting law, I'm sure she just wasn't familiar with the protocol. But again, I just want her voice to be heard, that she is very concerned and passionate, there are many of us who are, and perhaps even feel tonight, although there's more explanation, I don't really feel we have a reason why, except other members may not have been as great as Paul is, and therefore Paul Gannon is not going to be as good as other people. So, but we will be back next week, so I appreciate the time next week, and we'll see you there.
Yes, Mr. Ross.
May I sit here?
Certainly.
My name is Nelson Ross, and I live at 18 Bradford Road. Members of the Board, I've come before the Board of Selectmen regarding important personnel, labor, and other matters, and have observed the conduct of the Board of Selectmen under various chairpersons for over 40 years. My reason at this point, and maybe I should wait until the 23rd, but I'm here tonight, and I felt I should speak. My reason at this point in asking you not to change your decision on who will serve as Chair this year is substantive and important. I have been on an odyssey for 33 months, along with Karen Johnson, Tom Carey, David Pace, and this past year, former Town Administrator Charlie Cristello. We did this at the request and appointment by the Board of Selectmen. Our role was to define the role and authority of the Town Administrator. We started with a local bylaw approved virtually unanimously at the 2014 town meeting. It codified the authority which had been exercised by the Town Administrator. A local bylaw was as far as we could go at the time. The next step was taken at this most recent annual town meeting. An article seeking approval by town meeting of a proposed special act of the legislature was voted on. The article mirrored the role and authority of the Town Administrator previously adopted in 2014, and it was endorsed by the Advisory Committee with one lone dissenter. Town meeting voted in favor by an overwhelming majority. The special act is now pending before the Great and General Court, that is the official term for our legislature. The special act, once approved by Beacon Hill, will mean that the authority of the Town Administrator will be solidified and not subject to change at the whim or otherwise by the Board of Selectmen. Why is it important to define the role and authority of the Town Administrator position through a special act? Two reasons. Number one, it's required for sound administration and management of our town government. And most important, it is essential, if Hingham is, to be able to attract highly qualified Town Administrator candidates in the future. We learned this bitter lesson about five years ago. Hingham has been behind the times. Fifteen of the 17 towns that we compare ourselves with already had dealt with this issue either by special act or by charter. Our special act has a strong endorsement by Representative Bradley and our new state Senator. I have no doubt it will pass and become law. So what does this have to do with who is Chair of the Board of Selectmen? Here's the reason. As was his right, Selectmen Gannon voted against the special act. He strongly opposed at a town meeting, which I fully respect. Selectmen Healy, on the other hand, was a strong proponent of the special act. Once enacted, it will be imperative that the special act be implemented fully and as intended. The Selectmen who is Chair will be the prime person who will determine how the act is implemented. The first year will set the precedent. I have full confidence that Chair Healy will carry out the will of the town meeting when it comes to implementation. For the reasons given, I do not have the same level of confidence with Selectmen Gannon. I want our hard work for the benefit of the town to be fully realized. One final point. I do not want to see discord between the Chair and the Town Administrator regarding how the special act should be implemented. That would be very harmful to the town. I'm fully confident that with Mr. Healy as Chair, all will go smoothly. I do not have the same level of confidence if Mr. Gannon were Chair. Please do not change your vote on who will serve as Chair. Thank you very much.
And Nelson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just respond to you briefly.
Sure.
So the precedent that you seem to be setting with your, and everybody's entitled to their opinion, I respect your opinion about many things, including this, is just because I disagree with a certain bylaw, doesn't mean I won't follow it when the will of the voters, all 350 or so, are at town meeting this year? That's just wrong, to say that, that I wouldn't follow it, and if you don't have confidence, that's fine. Bottom line is, the precedent you're setting is that if I speak my mind on any issue that folks disagree with in a special group of people, that somehow that person's not qualified to be the Chair. I don't see the logic of that, I don't follow through on it. And the reality is, is that if and when the special act is enacted by the legislature, it won't just be the Chair that follows that, it'll be all three of us. This isn't our first go-around, this isn't our first rodeo on issues like this. This issue in different forms has presented itself, and we all agree to follow Code of Conducts, follow bylaws. So I do respect your opinion, but to imply that I couldn't follow through on the will of the townspeople because I, and the reason why I didn't vote for it is because I have, and I made it clear at town meeting, not to be disrespectful, that I have a very strong conviction that an elected official is more responsive to the will of his constituents than an appointed person. And that's where the Town Administrator is, an appointed individual. And I also base that on my experience, Nelson, which you can't stand in my shoes, and you haven't been in conversations, situations that I've been in.
Please.
So I'm just letting you in. Please, what?
You're in the red zone.
I don't think I am. But anyway, Nelson, let me respond if I may, Paul.
I think we've all seen legislation enacted, and how the executive branch implements it varies widely. There are times when legislation is enacted, and there are times when it's not fully implemented, it's implemented in a way that is not the best way. So there are going to be interpretations, and the person who is sitting in the Chair's seat is going to have, in my judgment, it's my opinion, a lot to say about how it's implemented. And that's the concern I have. I'm not saying you, I don't know whether, how you would do it. I've said, this is about... I've said, this is about a level of confidence, and it's based on if somebody has been opposed to the role of the Town Administrator being so solidly in place, is that person going to implement it as well as the person who has been solidly behind it? And that's Paul Healy. That's all I'm saying.
So that, I guess, so that's your criteria, is because he supported this bylaw, he's better qualified to be the Chair?
No.
Okay.
It's because I have confidence.
And I appreciate that. But, but the reality is, is that, believe me, when I say this, the three-member Board here, we're not shy about speaking up what we believe in, and it would be a three-minute member decision as to how to implement it. The Chair would maybe set agendas and direct, but we're very, at least in my experience, agreeable to allowing each of us to have input through our administrators, I know our Town Administrator's not here, but our assistant Town Administrator. So, I, I think you're mistaken in that, but you're certainly entitled to it, and, you know, if that's the reason why you break tradition, the reasons were given me, Nelson, were because I was running for Senate, which isn't true, and because some people called up and said they didn't want me to be it. Those are the reasons that were given on May 5th, I just want you to know. It had nothing to do with the bylaw, it had nothing to do with any of that.
These are my reasons.
I know, I'm just saying, nobody raised that issue, but...
I have invested 33 months in this issue. I want to see it fully and properly implemented, with no problems.
And I don't know what problems you're referring to, because if it passes as a special act of the Legislature, then it, it speaks for itself.
Well, it speaks for itself, but there will be questions of, how are we going to implement this particular provision? There always are.
We have three members of a Board that would make that decision, it's not going to be just the Chair. As competent as Paul Healy is, he's always been inclusive, and will always have, and so would anybody else, I'm sure Mary would be if she was the Chair, allowing everybody of input, and it's, it's normally a vote of the Board is how we do it. So, I don't know, I think, I think you're misguided in terms of your concerns.
Okay.
I need, I need to, I need to jump in here. And, so this is, this is going to be a little difficult for me. Paul, I, I think, what I'm hearing you say is that you still haven't gotten a satisfactory reason for the vote, and on May 5th, I wanted to kind of be positive and talk about why I thought Paul Healy was best suited. What I tried to do in the remarks I just made was to set a little bit of context for the role of the Chair, which was to do that. There was a comment from the audience that that was not sufficient, I'm hearing you, I'm, I'm going to give you a couple of facts that compelled my decision. These are the facts that I really don't want to give, but I don't want there to be any uncertainty here.
Mary, you don't have to give me an explanation, you should give the people in town. Whatever it is, you could have said it on May 5th, you could say it now.
I, I...
Fair enough, I never stopped you from making a comment.
Well, no, and I, out of, out of, out of courtesy and esteem from my colleagues, I don't, I, again, I'm uncomfortable discussing personnel matters in, in a setting like this. I understand we have to, but I don't. You know, for me, and, and I certainly value your contributions to the town, your contributions to the Board, for me, it came down to a couple of things. For me, it came down to lack of presence at meetings. I went back through all our meetings, and Paul, you were later absent for close to 30% of them, and sometimes it was as much as an hour. And I remember we had a Planning Board vacancy one night, and we literally had to stop the meeting for 45 minutes so you can participate. I was with the Town Administrator at Boston Golf when we were meeting, and we had to delay the meeting and wait, and we didn't know, do we, do we start without, do we not start? But, you know, my, my issue has less to do with the votes you've taken, it's that, you know, you weren't here for a lot of votes, and I want to hear what you have to say about issues. I want, I want to discuss them, I want to hear the votes. And, so, I, I want you in the room, I value where you come from. I think there were also some instances where there were some abstentions. I remember on our Board of Selectmen goals, and it wasn't, it wasn't the implementation of the goals, it was the goals themselves. And I thought, gosh, if, if you can't vote on that in the Chair role, will we have goals? Will we make those votes? And, and, you know, when I think about a Chair, and as I said, a Chair really needs to drive the votes and be decisive, and, and I think it's harder in this Chair than in either one of these. And I think I saw some examples this past year where there wasn't that decisiveness. And I think in the Chair role, that would spill over in other places. And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make a judgment or be critical, I'm, I'm just looking at the facts and saying that, that there were important discussions that went on at this table, and we didn't have the benefit of your point of view. And that, for me, was, was pretty compelling. I would also say that it's been my observation that there are times when it's difficult for staff or other volunteer committees to reach you. And again, I, I know both of you are attorneys, and your schedule is different than mine, but I've, I've seen, I've seen the strain that creates, I've seen the anxiety it creates, and, you know, I remember with the Code of Conduct that we had in the fall, the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee was trying to advance it, we wanted to get it, and they were having trouble, they were, they were having trouble getting a response. And again, I, I don't bring these things up, I, I bring these things up to say that I'm, I'm looking at facts and experience to justify my vote. And again, I understand that in the Selectmen role, we could all make this a full-time job if we wanted to, and still not get it all done. We, we all have to put boundaries around that based on, based on other things we have going on, and I think that's an individual choice, and I respect everybody's individual choice. But when it comes to the Chair and driving the agenda of the town, those are things that I think we have to be mindful of, and I think that if one of our colleagues is in a point in time where they're not prepared to carry out those responsibilities, then I don't think it's the right time. And I didn't think it was the right time.
And I appreciate what you have to say, I just have a couple of comments to that. You're missing a couple of points. Before you got here, I made the meetings, I was here. And when you were here, I made virtually all the meetings that I, that I understood. I was late a few times, and I remember, it was because I was running for State Senate, and I was trying to be somewhere to serve this town in a higher capacity, so I could do good things for this town. It wasn't as if I was preoccupied. But you know, and Paul knows, that, that as of April 12th, I was no longer involved in that race. Let me just finish. So, the bottom line is, is that your concern about me being, trying to be a public servant for this town and do good for it, and if I was late for a couple of meetings, you know that, that won't carry over. In terms of, well...
I don't know that, I'm sorry.
I'm not running for Senate, and I have a history of doing it, I don't expect you to, Paul. The bottom line is, is this, is that just recently, my daughter was coming home. I asked the office if we could have a meeting later. I thought they might reschedule the meeting, because, you know, my daughter was coming home, and I said, you know, I may not be able to be there during, during the meeting. I said, I could probably get here a little late, and the answer I got was, we can't hit, we can't do it late, because we have licensing issues. Well, next Thursday, before we scheduled this agenda item for now, another one of my colleagues has a scheduling problem, and wanted to change the meeting, which we couldn't do. But guess what we do? We are putting it on, and we're going to suspend potentially until she can come back. So, I've asked, when I couldn't be here, if we could do it. My colleague was away for two weeks, we didn't have a meeting. You know, if I'm away, and I ask, I'm not going to get the same, same, same response. So, you have to understand that when people are away and traveling, they let the office know, we reschedule. When I, when I asked to do it, we had to go forward. It wasn't a question about what about this date or that date. So, again, I don't apologize for me wanting to serve this town and do the best job I can and run for Senate, but everybody knows, I'm not running. That means my attention is here full-time, in this, in this office, with the Substance Abuse Coalition, with special needs people. I will do everything I can, as I am 100% person, no matter what I do, to do the best job for this town. So to say that's the case, to say that the staff couldn't reach me, I think that's laughable. I have called this office scores of times to try to reach my Town Administrator, he has not called me back, he has not been in the office.
You know, we can't...
You can do what you want, Paul. When I was calling about trying to reach people, I'm the person that was trying to reach out. When there was a meeting in the back room with Avalon that I wasn't advised of, Mr. Healy was there, and Ted Alexiades were talking, and it was a secret meeting prior to our vote, I asked about what was going on that day, and I didn't get a call back. And you know what, the response I got later from Ted was, well, you didn't ask me. I said, Ted, I did. I saw jaws drop when I walked in that room, that we should have known about that. So I'm reaching out, I'm asking questions all the time, I say, hi, how come I don't know about this? Well, you didn't ask. And that's not right, you know? And I have a good working relationship with Betty and Tom, and I will tell you, in this last four weeks, it has been, it has been a pleasure to work with them on a number of issues, including Barnes-Worf. I, I'm very happy. I'm getting cooperation, as I always did from them, and I feel really good about it. So to say that the staff tries to reach me, you know, I reach out to people on the days they're here and they're not here, I try to be respectful if I need to get ahold of them, we've talked on weekends. I don't know where you get the information, Mary, but I will, let me just finish. I don't know where you get your information, but I'm always accessible, and I have talked to people all the time. And so to say that, I just don't follow, I think, I think it's just ingenuous, to be honest with you.
Well, I've, I'm only speaking from my personal experience, because I will say that our, our Selectmen's Office staff is extraordinarily professional, and I think that their relationships with individual Board members is simply that. And, and I will give you an example. The Tuesday after Memorial Day, we had gotten a request, you know, I think it was like the Wednesday before, asking about the timing for Talent Bank interviews. We all get an email saying, the moderator's available on this day, you know, what, what are some possible dates to be available for Talent Bank interviews? And we can't, we have to get everybody's schedule, and then we have to call 20, 25 people and line them all up. So it's a, it's an intensive process. So, I happened to be in the office that day, and everybody had responded but you. And there had been multiple calls put out, you got the same email we did, and we actually, we thought we missed the, the publication deadline for the Hingham Journal, which meant we would have to postpone all those interviews and postpone Town Business by a week. Now, we were fortunate that a couple hours later, the Journal called back and said, you know, it was in time. But I, I look at that, and I was overseas at the time, Selectman Healy was somewhere else traveling in the States, and we both found a way to respond when it was requested. And I'm just going to make one other point. I absolutely did indicate that I was unavailable next Thursday. And I think we've had something like 42 Selectmen meetings since I had the privilege of being, being elected, and if, and I think I've, I've attended them all, I think I've been prepared for them all, and I think I've contributed to them all. Next week is a, is a personal conflict for me. I requested that dates be moved, and I was told that, that in terms of alternate dates that were proposed, they didn't all work for my colleagues. I think we all offer each other that courtesy.
I didn't get that courtesy when I asked for it, though, a few months ago.
I, 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 I don't know about, I don't know about that, but, you know, Paul, to me, close to 30% of the meetings to be later absent is just, that's a really big number for me, and...
I wasn't absent, I was absent for two meetings.
Right.
And, and I offered to come late for one. The only other meeting I ever missed was a 10-minute meeting on a Monday about a vote, and we had canceled Tuesday's meeting, and I thought they were both canceled. That's the only meeting I actually missed, and it was a mistake. So we all, we all make mistakes, right? It was a 10-minute meeting. The other meeting, I asked it be put over till 8 o'clock so I could make the meeting, and I was told, we cannot do that, because we have a licensing matter. Exactly what we're going to do next week, potentially, to, to benefit you. And I have no problem, generally speaking, of accommodating, we all accommodate our colleagues. I, I was away too, by the way, I'm allowed to go away for my anniversary, and, and when I got back, I let them know before the deadline, everybody was fine with it. Mary, you, you weren't there for part of the Talent Bank. Am I going to call you out, but you, you want to talk about when people don't show up? You were away for two weeks, we didn't schedule the meeting, I assumed to accommodate you, we could have had meetings, if we...
I don't think we had any business.
Well, we can always find business. I've been doing it for a couple of years, I'm just letting you know. But you know, it's good to accommodate each other, but don't say I missed a bunch of meetings, because before you got here, I didn't miss meetings, and we've all missed meetings. Paul's missed a meeting, you know, we have a life, and people, things happen. I'm not going to call anybody out for it, Mary, but you know what, I asked to be able to put a meeting over to 8 o'clock. You got the courtesy, I didn't, okay?
Again, I didn't, I really didn't want to get into this, I don't, I don't, I don't think it serves anybody. I think there's a difference between, between one or two meetings and being later absent for up to 30% of the meetings at this Board.
I wasn't late for 30% of the meetings.
Paul, I went through every single H-CAM video. I mean, you know, I, I like to dig into things, sometimes to the detriment, but I literally went onto every H-CAM to the beginning of the meeting, and there were a lot, and up to, just about 30% of the meetings, there were only two chairs occupied. And I think that that is significant, and I think that the Chair, as I said, I think that the Chair sets the pace and the tone for the town, and that a lot of our business affects other people's business. And I can only speak to my own personal experience, which has been in the last year, and...
I was here a year before you, and I was there at all the meetings, and I...
I don't, I can, I can only speak to what, to, to what I experience and what I see. I would also just add that, you know, this past year, I think in the, in the budget and the warrant season, one thing that I noticed was that the budget and warrant books never left your desk. And, you know, I would take those budget books home, because we'd have budget hearings, and, you know, you want to dig into the budgets, you want to read the summaries the department heads put together, because I think that's, I think we have a responsibility to lots of people. And I think that's a big part of the preparation, and again, that's really important, in particular for the Chair, to drive the conversation, understand the budget, understand the warrant articles, bring people together at the end of the budget season, when we, we oftentimes have trouble getting together. And the, what I experienced this year, I think, I have, I have difficulty seeing you play that very important Chair role, based on my experience, and...
One of the problems, Mary, is, I will just say this, is that, you know, everybody handles paperwork differently. If you want to spend 10 hours on an issue, whether it be watching video about meetings or about reading the warrant article, that's great, but I don't spend that, I'd never have all my life, I'm a quick study, okay? And I spend time reading things, and, and I listen to people, I'm more interested in hearing what people have to say in town, and I understand, if I don't, I ask questions. And then I call Betty, or I call Tom, or I call Ted, if he's around, and I ask questions, okay? That's what I do, Betty, that's what the job is, because I don't do what you do.
I understand, you know, people, people have, people have different styles and different ways of doing it, but I, I do think that in the Chair role, you have to have a sufficient command of the issues, the relationships with people, and the ability to drive the business forward. And, and I had my doubts about that, and that's why I cast my vote for Mr. Healy.
All right, let's, let's, let's let anybody from the general audience, Judy Sneath, 89 North Street.
First, I just want to thank you, Paul, for opening yourself up to this kind of conversation. It's very hard. I've been on the Planning Board for 11 years. We have gone from cycling through to the next person up, and we've also gone to where we don't cycle through. I've seen the Advisory Committee, you know, sort of pick the next likely person and not pick the next likely person. And when people vote in this town, they vote to put you on a board, but they don't vote for the Chair. The people who vote for the Chair are the people who are sitting next to you. And it's very painful not to be voted by your colleagues, and for whatever reason it is, I feel like this conversation about why is just too painful. It's really about rebuilding the trust, because maybe next year, that trust will be rebuilt, and, and that chairmanship would be something that your colleagues would vote for you. But I, I think a petition is just ill-advised, because the people in this room go home, they don't have to sit here night after night experiencing this, and that's why the vote for Chair is a vote of your colleagues.
And I appreciate your comments, I will, I will assure you that it's not painful for me. I'm very comfortable...
I guess I'm projecting.
No, 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 and I, and I appreciate it, but, but in, in politics, there are times where people aren't going to agree with you, and they will take steps to, you know, to punish you or to, or to exclude you, and I, that's how I felt, but I always expected that. It's the people in town that are doing this petition, it's not me. I would be very comfortable in, in... I would be very comfortable in being a selectman. And I already said this many times, I'm honored and privileged to do it. If my colleagues don't want to pick me because someone thinks I'm running for Senate and I'm not, or somebody called them on the phone and told them not to vote for me, you know, if that's the reasons they give me, I'm going to get over it. Life is good for everybody. I have a healthy family. I spent yesterday with my dad for Father's Day. He's 80, he's doing great. We played golf. Those are the things, but we get out a little early. If that's okay. And so life is good, you know? So I'm used to this stuff. So if somebody wants to take a shot at me, you know, they can, but...
I just don't think it's a shot because I've been, I've been there on the, on both sides of this thing and it has been difficult, maybe not painful. It's been difficult no matter who, which seat you were sitting in. And it really just comes down to trust, not specific incidents.
You say that, but the people in town, I think, that I've talked to were disgusted by that meeting. They were appalled by that meeting. And they didn't buy the explanations that were given. This is what they tell me. I'm okay with going forward, but people have a right to speak their mind, just like there's people here tonight.
They do, and that's why I...
And that's why people will speak their mind briefly on the 23rd. We can't exclude them and we can't box them out and we can't...
Tonight's the conversation.
Well, you can do what you want, Paul. Your legacy is going to be to exclude people from speaking. You go right ahead and do that. Go right ahead.
You can't, see, that's not a way to build trust. And so you can't...
He's just said he will not allow people to speak next week.
But there's a trust element here that is beyond conversation.
They can come in, they can come in at the beginning of the meeting and speak. Thank you, Judy.
I'm Alona Cutler, 86 Central Street. And I'm fairly new to Hingham. And I'm making my observations on how, I love Hingham. And I love the town. I love the people. And I'm glad to be here. And I recognize that we have three board members that are hard-working board members and I respect them for it. I think it's a difficult job, especially when the town of Hingham has about 20,000 population now, if I'm not right. And there's only three board members. That's an awful lot to expect of you, three, especially when you have some personal obligations and you're not able to attend a meeting. That only leaves two people. So I just questioned it when I heard there are only three selectmen in this town. Why is there not five? And I called, I wanted to see what the other towns are doing and their population. So I made some calls tonight and I found out that Cohasset, with the 7,000 population, has five selectmen. Hull has a population of 11,000, five selectmen. Norwell has 11,000, five selectmen. Rockland has a population of 17,000, five selectmen. The only one that has three is Duxbury. They have 15,000. I couldn't understand this. I mean, to me, there should definitely be more than three people serving a town. I think that's just too much work. And this way, I wasn't too happy at the town meeting, seeing that the town administrator had gotten such power out of that vote. I really feel the power belongs to the Board of Selectmen and there should be a bigger board. And I would like people to consider that. I think, I came from a town that had three board members. They went to five. Then they changed their government. They went from a huge town meeting that they debated too, too much, too much. This past town meeting that I observed was too little debate. But, you know, towns do things differently. Well, the town that I came from, which was Randolph, had town meeting for, I don't know how many years. I was a town meeting member for three years. We were voted in. And I just found that the woman that decided to change the government in Randolph, and there was a lot of dissent there from the town meeting members. They felt they didn't want to give up their power for the town. Well, we went to nine council people and a very good town manager from Quincy. And we, we functioned much more efficiently and everybody was happier. So let's consider sometimes change. Sometimes change is good. But personally, I feel that the change of letting a chair go more than a year, I think we should be fair and allow Paul Gannon to have his time as chair and see how he functions and grade him then. Because he never had a chance to be chair. So I think where he ran for state senate, I think that was a valid reason for sometimes being late or missing some meetings. So I really feel that people should consider change. And I would like to see people really think about getting on the warrant for next town meeting to have five selectmen. Be easier for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hershey.
Yes. I'd like to mention something.
You got my good side there, Bob.
Two words I didn't hear. One was transparency and I didn't hear honesty. I consider Paul J. Gannon, Pope Gannon, I think he's a very, very honest person. I really wish he was in that position. I don't like the non-transparency we have all with you, not allowing people to speak. And I'd like to ask why you don't allow certain people to speak. Is there a reason why you don't? You don't want to hear the truth? Is that why or...
Mr. Hershey, are you making a point?
I'm asking a question. Why?
I've already provided you with the expla, I didn't provide it to you. I provided it to the gentleman who sought to speak.
You told me at the time. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. I spoke to the gentleman. I explained that he's under indictment. He's represented by counsel. It would be inappropriate for me to engage in...
You've done it to me. I'm not under indictment yet. I haven't been...
Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
You told me I couldn't speak because I always spoken on a gen writing, okay? So I think that's very disrespectful to me.
Mr. Hershey.
You don't even know what he's going to say. Here's Paul Healy, asleep at the wheel.
Mr. Hershey, thank you.
It's on the agenda. You want to speak on the agenda tonight.
Is it your position, Mr. Healy, that you're not going to allow me to speak at any public meetings?
You are represented by counsel. You're under indictment. You are subject to disciplinary hearings by this town. I am not, I'm not going there with you, Chris. I am not doing that.
I waive my right to counsel.
N.O.
So is your position not to allow me to speak on any issue?
We're not talking, Mr. Phillips.
Is that your position?
We're not talking.
What are you afraid of?
We're not talking.
Any issue at all? That's your position.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak before we adjourn for the evening? Yes, Mr. Rabuffo.
Bruce Rabuffo, One Driggins Path. Little history here. There is no right to be chair. The town is replete in its history with people who have kept the chair for a number of years for a variety of reasons. It's been common practice in the last few years to rotate it. But I know of an issue, when I was up for chair, where one of my colleagues approached a member who was being elected to ask, "Would he vote with this other selectman to keep me from being chair?" So that's recent history. You can shake your head, Mr. Gannon. I'm sharing...
Who are you talking about, Bruce? I wasn't elected. How am I going to vote you off?
I didn't say you.
What, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know what you're...
So that was issue, that's issue number one. Issue number two is that the late John Riley was also very heavily involved with business. And there was a year where through the town administrator, he conveyed, "I may not be able to fulfill the role." Let me give that serious thought. So that was his decision to make. We encouraged him to do what he thought was right. And John Riley, John Riley did what he thought was right. This is a very interesting decision for, that we're even having this discussion. The practice has been you three decide. And it's you three that decide because you have to work with each other and you have to be comfortable with each other. So I appreciate very much the fact that you've had this discussion. We've been at it for an hour. I think it's time to move along to whatever the next part of the agenda is. You've made your decision. It's not for the town to decide. It's not for a petition to decide. It's been practice for the Board of Selectmen to decide. Thank you.
And Bruce, I will tell you that nobody said it was anybody's decision, but the Board, but the people in town have a right to speak on issues and their right to present petitions, whether or not the Board considers them is, is secondary. Everybody has a right to be heard. That's all, that's all I'm getting out of this.
You've spoken once already, Mr. Napoli. I'd like to adjourn the meeting for the night.
Do I get to talk again?
Is what you want to say compelling for tonight?
Yes.
If you would please be brief.
Mr. Napoli, 16 North Street, I will be brief. I just wanted to comment on two things. Want to clarify that we will be back next week to talk in the 15 minutes. Are you comfortable with that or just, you said no and then there was, couldn't really hear exactly what happened?
Well, I mean, I've put it on the agenda deliberately just to get this over with. We have a lot of important business that the town needs to pursue and I don't want to bog down in an issue such as this. I think, you know, Ms. Power explained it, you know, and I thought eloquently. And as difficult as it was to provide examples that went beyond what was stated previously, I think that's been done. It's been difficult for Mr. Gannon. He has obviously...
It hasn't, though.
He seems fine.
You know, okay. All right. But, all right, you know, his...
Mr. Healy did tell you in an email on the 15th, which we all have in writing, that she was not going to be available. It's our camp's belief that you put this on the meeting tonight to preclude our people coming here. That kind of speaks to the, we're here for transparency. We know probably you're not going to change this, your decision. But as I said in a private email to you, I'm a mother of two boys in this town and it dis, it made me extremely sad to see that the school has decided to close the high school and the middle school because they are scared of what will happen in this election. That is what we're teaching our children, that politicians bicker and create fights and look at report cards, who's late, who's not late. I don't know, but I do know he will call me back very fast and anyone else, I know. I've never gotten, not gotten a call back. So maybe he's more responsive to constituents than coworkers. I find that strange to believe, but I've always gotten a call back from everyone on this board. So I really feel it is very important to continue this dialogue and to set the precedence in this town that maybe we're above the politics of he said, she said, who's five minutes late, who has a daughter, who is going where. We don't care. We want people to do their jobs and to do good jobs. And if we want to really see how Mr. Gannon will perform, let him be the chair. He has an election next year. If he's late or doesn't do his job like he should, he will be voted out. That's what the vote is for. So let him fail. Put him in the position and see what a great job he'll do. If not, he'll be voted out.
My position and commitment, and I'll repeat it, is to do what I think is in the best interest of this town. As difficult as it is to sit here and go through this, I'm doing this because I think that we're having the conversation that some people want to have. If Ms. Kelly couldn't make it tonight, I'm not, I'm not sure what to say. What I can say, however, is I'm not going to let this issue fester. Mr. Gannon made some statements that I take exception to, but for the sake of moving forward and putting this behind us, I choose not to respond to it. Mr. Hershey feels that, you know, he can have blowups and, you know, ridicule and mock the people who serve this town on a volunteer basis. I find that unfortunate.
We are not doing that, sir.
You're not doing that. That's right.
We're trying to respectfully...
But the point basically is this. I made a decision that I think is in the best interest of this town. I've served this town for 35 years, not as long as some people in this room. But the fact is, I'm not here for anything other than to leave this place better than I found it. And as difficult as that decision was on May 5th, that's what I did. I have nothing against Mr. Gannon whatsoever.
But when you say that, I guess to a common person, it just sounds like you do. Because you're both saying other people didn't do their jobs and I want to leave the town in the best position. It's implying that Mr. Gannon would not do a good job.
Well, let's, let's, let's spin it out. Mr. Gannon said, "I was involved in a secret meeting with Avalon." All right?
I think he said with Ted Alexiades about Avalon, not...
No, I think he was pointing to me on that.
You were there.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, you were there.
Okay. Well, Avalon submitted an application to build 250 units in the Hingham shipyard, tearing down the old Building 19 warehouse. And it had been in that condition for over 50 years. It was a visual blight. However, it was in a place that, in an affordable housing application, made it ideally suited for approval. I know from my experience on the planning board, having gone to the SJC as a plaintiff, dealing with this very issue, that this was going to be a very, very difficult application to get around. Okay? We prepared at great effort a site eligibility letter with respect to Avalon 2, to Mass Housing Partnership. When that letter had to be decided on and voted on, it was Mary Power and I that had to do that. We had to go through that, analyze it and make a decision as to whether it was sufficient to state the town's concerns with respect to development on that particular site. When that project came in, there was a hearing in front of the ZBA. The ZBA is probably one of the finest boards in this town. They deal with some extraordinarily difficult issues, highly contentious and always controversial, especially when it's a 40B. Because that subject, that particular application is, is subject to a lesser review that makes it extremely difficult for the towns to withstand an application of that nature. Okay. So that initial hearing was held on March 28th. We had the same hearing here. Our meeting ended. We couldn't go down and attend that as a mass because it wasn't posted. But nonetheless, Mr. Gannon went down and made a public statement saying to the gathered neighbors present there, "I've got your back." He didn't review the, the submittals, but it immediately put the ZBA in a very bad spot and I felt that something had to be said to the applicant to offset what I thought was a very, very dangerous statement that was made.
How do you know he didn't review the submittals?
He said so. So...
I never said that.
Well, watch the meeting.
I never said that.
And so I asked for a meeting. I asked Mr. Alexiades to contact the applicant. And I voiced my own concerns with respect to the submittal, the kind of issues that would have to be addressed if this was to be seriously considered. At the very next meeting, the applicant came in and they had dropped the, the number of units by over 50. So right out of the gate, just tried to stabilize the process moving forward so that the ZBA could continue to do its job. That particular project, while it was approved, also included some significant infrastructure improvements for Route 3A, also included a significant mitigation payment that was without precedent in this town in the entire time that I have served in public government. So, you know...
And I was well aware of that, by the way.
Yes, Mr. Gannon, Mr. Gannon had a perception of what occurred, but in fact, the reality was quite different and it was done in the context of what I've just explained to you.
Let me just jump in here because one of the things that we do on this board is we have something called liaison responsibilities. And so typically what we do is that each of our three members have liaison responsibilities. So as, as we heard earlier in the night, Mr. Gannon has liaison responsibility for community preservation. So while, while we still bring issues and vote as an entire board, when there are things in between meetings, the liaison works with it. I don't see Mr. Beer here. I had the privilege of working with Mr. Berry on the Lehner property. Paul Healy is our, Paul Healy is our planning ZBA liaison because of all the experience that he brings. And there are times when each of us in our liaison responsibility does interact. Now, we have to be really careful when we do that, because if two of us are present and it's not posted, then we have an open meeting problem. So I don't, you know, I don't necessarily agree with the characterization of things being secret, but I respect everybody's right to do that. I would just say to you, because I feel like we're starting to go down a little bit of a path here. I, what we have tried to do tonight is to respond to a petition that stated that the Board of Selectmen didn't give an adequate explanation. It is up to each individual in this room and each individual citizen to make up their own mind based on the facts that they've heard. And that is certainly your choice, and it's everybody else's choice. And our, excuse me, and our purpose in doing this tonight was not to, in any way, restrict Ms. Kelly, but the premise of Ms. Kelly's, one of the premises of her petition was, there was an inadequate explanation. Ms. Kelly, as any citizen, has a right to bring something into this board. We appreciate when people work with us on that, and we can schedule it, but she certainly has that right. It's up to you to decide how you, whether or not you accept what you've heard tonight from this board. And whatever decision you make, that's fine. I'm not sure that there's any more value in continuing to talk here. I think we've all sort of made up our minds, and I think we should respect the fact that everybody is entitled to their own opinion on this.
So can I just, so the reason he is not going to be in the chairman's position is because he was late to two meetings? Is that sort of the takeaway that I'm getting?
No, okay. So, Ms. Napoli, I'm going to tell you that...
A question will probably be deemed disrespectful, but I'm just trying to, because that sort of seems like...
Ms. Napoli, I did not support Mr. Gannon as the chair, because in my experience, he has been, he has been late or not in attendance for close to 30% of our meetings this year. He has, in my estimation, he has not been as prepared as I think a chair would need to be. And it has been my observation that both volunteers and staff, that he has not been as responsive as I think a chair needs to be. I understand your point about giving somebody a chance and let them do some, and see what happens. I look at that a different way. I have a different view than you. This is a $100 million business. We have hundreds of volunteers, we have hundreds of staffers, we have hundreds of staff, and that was, quite frankly, too big of a gamble for me to take. And that's my opinion, and I know you're entitled to your opinion. I hope I am entitled to mine as well. And I don't know if I can say it any plainer than that. Again, I have tried to be positive in this. I have no interest in embarrassing anybody, embarrassing the board, but I don't think I can be any more plain-spoken than that.
Just last thing, in terms of what may would Paul say, or Mary, is I'll never apologize for standing up for people in town, whether they're Bradley Woods Shipyards, South Hingham, North Hingham. I will never apologize to saying that I will support you and do what I can to protect you, and that's what I was saying that night. Now, to say that you can't go down to that meeting and sit in, I've spoken to John Coughlin, unless you deliberate with each other, you are allowed to go to a meeting. It's kind of ridiculous to think you can't show up. But that's the story that goes out there. Let me just tell you what happened is, I was given a copy of the memorandum with Avalon. Of course, I wasn't told about the meeting that took place. I wasn't given much information at all about that, but I was given the memorandum the day before the meeting. So what I did was, I spent my time. Maybe I don't spend my time like you do, Mary, doing a bunch of different things, but I spent it wisely, and I paid attention, and I found a provision in that agreement that allows in the Avalon deal, because there's another piece of land for Sealed there, they can come in and try to amend that. And when I brought it up at the meeting that this was going on, and no one had talked about it, Paul said to me, "Oh, so you basically went to a private meeting." And I said, "No, Paul, it was a public meeting. I was invited in. I learned something about it." That's also part of your job as a selectman, as a chairman, going out to places and doing things in the community, whether it's for special needs, or substance abuse, or interfaith vigils, like Paul and I were at the other night. It's not just showing up for a meeting, it's a lot more than that. But the thing that probably irked me the most is, after I raised that issue about the potential to further harm the people down in the Shipyard and Bradley Woods, who were very upset about this whole process, after I made it clear, this is what happened. I came into the meeting, to the office prior to the meeting, in Ted Alexias' office, with him and a few other people, I'll leave it at that right now. I could overhear him from out here, saying, "We cannot let Paul Gannon make that point. We cannot let him get into that about that issue and talk about that issue and make the point." And I overheard him say that. I could not believe that instead of working together to try to make sure that the people in the Avalon don't go over the 190, that was my only concern at that point, is I was being basically undercut from within. And I overheard it, so I was right there. And so, you know, I'm doing my job. I'm out there working hard. I go to many events and many things. So, Mary, I really take exception that you don't approve of the way I do my job, but you're not me, and I would never judge you what you do with your time, or what you do and where you go. I just wouldn't. Because I don't think it's appropriate.
Paul, you've left me no choice tonight. I've, I can't say it enough times. I didn't want to have this conversation. I kept it positive on May 5th. I kept it positive at the beginning. If you don't like what you heard, I felt, I felt pushed into saying this by comments you made. I would just as rather not have this conversation at all. My opinion is that Paul Healy is best suited as the chair. I value and respect the contributions you make to this board. I look forward to working with you this year on a number of issues, and...
As do I, by the way.
And I want to, you know, and, you know, you can conclude what you want as far as what's taken place here. I would ask for the same courtesy.
And I will. The only problem I have, Mary, is this. I don't have a problem with your opinions in terms of what you think about a lot of things, but when you judge me about what you think I might or might not do, when you and I never see each other during the day, you don't know when I'm here, what time of day I'm here, whether I show up on a weekend. You know nothing. So I just wouldn't get into that, and you did. That's what I take exception. Not that you have an opinion as to who's the better, best qualified, that doesn't bother me. But I just, you shouldn't be judging people when you don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I have to make a decision. As part of my job every year, I have to make a decision about the leadership for this town. And I make that based on the facts and based on my estimation of different things, and that's what I've done. It's not necessarily a judgment, it's a decision. Who is best suited to lead the town in this coming year?